All right, I'd like to call this meeting together. And our invocation and pledge by last here.
Well, Buddy at first told me I was doing the blessing tonight. Now, like where the food was.
You can tell when it's coming like this, I got food on my mouth.
All right, let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for everything that you do for us. Give us the wisdom to make decisions that are pleasing to you and our constituents that have entrusted us with these decisions. And we ask that you please lead us to make difficult decisions rather than expeditious and easy decisions. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hip. Item number one, adoption of consent agenda. Do we have a motion to be adopted from consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Reeder, second by Mr. Sperry. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Motion by Mr. Sperry, second by Sarah Wood. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number three, ordinance 01-01-21. An ordinance to amend the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2020-2021, ordinance number 041420, to provide for the revised revenue and expenditure appropriations relating to the operating and capital purposes of Newberry County. This is the public hearing. Do we have anybody from the public to speak pro or con? Hearing none, we have a motion to be the third reading. Motion by Ms. Sarah Wood, second by Mr. Shealy. Ms. Adams, do you want to, just for the record, do you people know what we're talking about here?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As we talked about at the January 11th work session, this amendment is very significant to the future of industrial development in Newberry County. All in all, it provides the potential for, to acquire or newly access about 800 acres of property and provides for the ability to develop as much as 6.7 million square feet of industrial space under a roof. At the same time, the county's annual carrying costs on its debt levy do not increase. The debt structure of the special source revenue bonds keeps the amortization at about $450,000, where it has been since 2006. The new term of the debt will be for approximately 17 and a half years. Also, the cash flow of the county is not compromised. While this amendment does call for $1.5 million of fund balance, this would still leave the county with 6.3 months of operating reserves. So, all in all, this is a really good opportunity for the county to develop a site that is near the interstate and is near infrastructure and has shown itself to be very attractive to industry.
All right, you heard Mr. Adams. We've got a motion. We've got a second. Any discussion?
Just, Mr. Chairman, I just want to go on the record again. I don't have any objection to any one of the separate aspects of this ordinance. But for going forward, I just want to be on the record that there are about four independent considerations here. And in the future, I think these ought to be on separate ordinances rather than all rolled into one. Because it puts you in a position where you either agree to all or you go agree to none. And I don't think that's where we ought to be. It's almost like a budget where you agree to all of it or none of it without being able to address each line item. So, just want to go on the record that in the future, for administration, please, when we have these things.
Let me address that, Mr. Chairman. Of course, the amending process in adoption of any ordinance allows the council to take out parts that they don't like, add in parts that they want that aren't there. So, it's not take it as it is entirely. And when we get to the budget for the general operating, we're going to be talking about $26 million. And that's not food we're going to be able to cut in small bites.
That's correct. Just a comment I wanted on the record.
All right, all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Item number four, ordinance number 112320. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the Newberry County adopted June 30, 2016. So asked to amend the zoning map acting on a request to amend the official zoning established codified Chapter 153 of the County of Newberry Code of Ordinances. So to rezone one real estate parcel totaling two and five tenths acres designated as TMS parcel number 523-85 from industrial to R2. Declare this the public hearing. Is there anybody to speak pro or con on this one? Hearing and seeing no one come with declare, the public hearing closed. Do we have a motion to speed the third reading? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Reader. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Chairman, the property owner is here in case council has any questions of him. I understand that we're cutting off two acres of a seven acre parcel. Two and a half, okay. And the entire parcel right now is industrial and you want for two and a half acres to be used for R2 for the purposes of putting a residence on it.
All right, we've got a motion. We've got a second. Do we have any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor? It is unanimous. Item number five, ordinance number 010221. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of the sale of Newberry County South Carolina Special Source Revenue Bond Industrial Park Project and the principal amount not exceeding $5,500,000 in one or more series. The application of the proceeds of the said bonds to defray for economic development purposes the cost of certain infrastructure improvements and of acquiring certain property in Newberry County to refund outstanding amounts to the county's Series 2006 Special Source Revenue Bond and other matters relating thereto. This is the second reading. Do we have a motion to speed the second reading? Motion by Ms. Sarah Wood, second by Mr. Shealy. Ms. Adams, you want to talk to that one, please?
This is part of, or integral to, the first item on the agenda tonight. The budget amendment we talked about for industrial development. It's a $5.5 million special source revenue bond issue. This was approved yesterday by the state fiscal accountability authority. And it allows the county to reimburse itself basically about $5.5 million of the cost contained in the amendment. As we mentioned, we would keep the amortization at current levels of about $450,000 per year. The new term is about 17 and a half years. I think those, the other thing, Mr. Chairman, is the third reading of this ordinance is scheduled for March 3rd. We would be able to fund, the bank will fund the borrowing on the next day. It might be that we arrange for buying the property before this occurs. However, the county can cash flow until that bond is funded and the money's in the bank.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. All right, we've got a motion, a second. Do we have any discussion? Any questions?
Just a question. I know general obligation bonds were limited by state law. Are we limited by the amount of special source revenue bonds that we can get?
No, we're not pledging the full faith and credit of the county. In fact, what we're pledging is existing FLO revenue, the same FLO revenue that has been pledged for the existing SSRBs, which were mated to the original purchase of Mid-Carolina Commerce Park in 2005. So, we're keeping the same amortization level. We're pledging the same resources, although things are constantly going on and off the FLO stream. But it's not, we're not restricted. This does not affect our 8% constitutional debt limit.
So, there is no debt limit on SSRBs going forward? Like, there is no cap that we may be approaching?
It would be determined by the lender, whether you have enough debt service coverage. Whether if, the lender will examine the fee streams that you have and say whether you're too much of a risk for a given amount of money. So, the market, rather than any kind of legal prescription, will determine what you can borrow.
Okay, any other questions? All right, all in favor? It is unanimous. Item number six, 020321. An ordinance authorizing one, the execution and delivery of a First Amendment to an existing fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement, the fee agreement by and among Newberry County, South Carolina, the county, and the companies collectively identified for the time being as Project SAM 2 to provide for, A, the extension of the applicable investment period set forth in the fee agreement, and B, certain additional special source revenue credits, both in connection with additional investment in certain manufacturing and related facilities in the county, and two, other matters relating thereto title only. Do we have a motion to speed the first reading? Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Ms. Sarah Wood, Ms. Adams?
Mr. Chairman, first, I want to mention that I did have a conversation with Mr. Johnson earlier this week. He has requested that we not offer any more legislation or ordinances by title only for the time being. And we will honor that. We have asked our bond lawyers and our economic development lawyers in particular. We've advised them of this. This is where we get most of our title only first readings. But we will honor the wishes of Mr. Johnson unless there's a problem with the rest of council for that. And we don't see a problem with it. Mr. Chairman, this is for a company that originally pledged to invest $11.5 million in Newberry County. To date, they have invested $19 million. They originally pledged to hire 54 workers. They already have over 100 workers. They are pledging to invest $23.5 million additional dollars and their employment levels will double over the current number. While this is by title only, I can tell you that this is a fee in lieu ordinance that includes a 6% assessment ratio with a fixed millage for 30 years. The ordinance will include a special source revenue credit of 100% in years one and two and 50% every year thereafter.
All right, you heard the explanation of the county administrator. We've got a motion. We've got a second. Do we have any discussion?
Always going to be a discussion. The 50% for every year thereafter, you indicated we got a 6% assessment ratio.
Correct.
Our fee in lieu of, are you saying that for every year thereafter, after the first two years, that their assessment ratio is going to be equivalent to 3% rather than 6%?
I'm saying the tax liability computed with the value in the assessment ratio and the millage will be cut in half for every year thereafter.
And the normal assessment ratio would be 6%?
That will still be the assessment ratio. We don't change the assessment ratio. There's nothing in state law that allows for a 3% assessment ratio. Maybe the principle mathematics say that it turns out to be the same thing. But what we're saying is, once you compute the tax or the U.S.O.T.'s tax, because this is really a fee, not a tax in state law, you will, you will take the assessed value, you will, which will be computed at 6%, you'll apply the millage, and then for years three through 30, you would cut the liability in half, a 50% special source revenue credit.
All right, any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor? First reading? All opposed? All right, six, one with Mr. Hip being the opposing vote. Item number seven, appointments. Do we have any appointments? Mr. Shealy? Mr. Hip? Ms. Sarah Wood?
Yes, I have one to resign out of the library board. Ms. Julie McLeod has resigned. She's been on that board over, 20 years are over. So, I need to replace her. And I have Susan Epting from Little Mountain that I'd like to appoint her.
All right, have a motion to appoint Ms. Susan Epting. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Hip. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous for Ms. Susan Epting. Any other appointments, Ms. Sarah Wood?
None, that's all.
Mr. Johnson?
About to.
Mr. Reader? Is that Mr. Sperry?
No.
Okay, all right. Committee reports, Public Safety and Courts Committee. Mr. Tommy Long?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On January 25th, 6:00 PM, we had the Public Safety and Courts Committee Chairman, excuse me, Councilman Johnson was elected as the chairman of the committee. We had seven items on the agenda that night, which were committee reports, not committee reports, but department reports. We had DHEC present to us on the COVID-19 situation in the county. The coroner's office, sheriff's office. The coroner's office, sheriff's office, EMS, and rescue squads give us an update on their response from 2020, their response to call volume and et cetera. And then we had an update on the training grounds, and we had a report from the recruitment and retention officer, Mr. Gene Shealy from the City Fire Department, which is a joint employee for the county and the city that oversees our recruitment and retention. And that was all we had on the agenda for that night. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them for you.
All right, I heard the report. Anybody got any questions, or anybody that's on the committee have any additional comments?
He said that's all, but what he would tell you was it was too hot.
We did throw a lot of information at you.
Those were very good presentations of...
It was very informative.
We won't make it that long next time.
This is a briefing, you want... Yes. All right, any other comments? Thanks, Mr. Tommy. Thanks to all you who are served on that particular committee. Public Works and Planning Committee, 2121, Mike Pizzano, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Public Works and Planning Committee met on Monday, the 1st of February, at 6:00 PM. Being the first meeting of the year, chairman was elected, Mr. Scurry was nominated, and it passed unanimously. Mr. Tothker updated the committee regarding Stewart Landing subdivision and answered general questions about county planning commission. I requested that the committee consider purchasing a mini excavator with surplus funds from lease purchase from 1819, and the committee voted to send it to full council. Since that time, staff has reevaluated that, and we're going to withdraw the request. Committee voted to go into executive session with no action taken. Any questions?
Questions, comments, or comments from those who are actually serving on that committee? All right, if not, thank you. Right. Item number nine, executive session. Staff request an executive session under Code Section 30-4-78 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina as amended 1976 for two discussions of the negotiation incident to propose contractual agreements and proposed sale or purchase of property, receipt of legal advice where the legal advice relates to the public, to a pending threat or potential claim or other matters covered by the attorney-client privileges, settlement of illegal claims, or the position of the public agency in other adversary situations involving the assertion against the agency of legal claim. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Chairman, just to be more specific, this executive session concerns legal advice involving FAA funding for the Newberry County Airport.
All right, have a motion to go into executive session? Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Ms. Arrowood, all in favor? All right, we'll be going into executive session for a few minutes. Hopefully not too long.
Chairman, Council met an executive session for the stated purpose. No action was taken in that executive session.
All right, next agenda. I don't want the agenda is public comments and there are no requests for public comments. Comments or requests from county administrator?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Davenport told me this morning that she had talked with two of the members of the Public Works and Planning Committee, maybe with you also, Mr. Scurry, about the possibility of getting virtual participation for the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals. She has been working on that with Jay and also with the chairman, respective chairman of the two commissions. And we think we're in line to do that. We think all we need at this point is to pass a separate emergency ordinance like the one council did for itself to allow for these meetings virtually. We will have a reauthorization of the emergency ordinance for council on the 17th of February. However, the planning commission meets on the 16th. So if it's okay with council, would there be a date when we could have a single reading of that ordinance between now and the 16th? I think you have copies, a draft copy. It's the same ordinance that council approved for its own ability to work virtually.
When we had additions or deletions to our agenda, could we not have added that today so we wouldn't have had a special meeting?
Not under, there's been a court case, I think since you were last on council that says no. You have to notice it 24 hours in advance. But now, I will say, she began working on this on Tuesday morning after Monday night's meeting. So I mean, we are where we are. I take responsibility for the fact that it's not addressed sooner.
I think it's a great idea. I talked to Ms. Davenport already about it. I think we need to make sure that these people have an opportunity to participate because it's a terrible thing not to have a quorum. And you've got people that are depending on a judgment by the planning commission so they can go forward with a business or a home or whatever. And they go to a meeting and there's no quorum. So, you know, if we can help that quorum happen, I think that's what we need to do.
If you can, if you're not ready tonight, you can tell us tomorrow, or maybe you are ready tonight to say a time, a day when you can do this. Obviously, we could do this during the day if everyone's available.
That's fine.
It would take approximately eight minutes.
What are the wishes of council? Look at your calendars. Let's, let's.
Yeah, let's do it.
Let's get some agreement here right quick on getting this done.
Friday's a rainy day. Can't fish. Let's do it today.
Day after tomorrow?
Yeah.
And keep in mind, because we're already in that position, if you can't be here physically.
Yeah, you can do it virtually. So.
So how about, Mr. Chairman, how about Friday at four o'clock?
Friday at four?
That's not good.
I might could come in virtually. I have a meeting at three o'clock that'd have to be.
Sure, Taylor can help you.
I'm not sure if it'll be done by the end of the.
Well, how about?
Two, two o'clock?
Two o'clock. I could do that, especially if I could do it virtually so I could be at home for my other one. It's online as well.
Friday at two?
I can do that.
I have nothing else, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, thank you, thank you, thank you. And again, folks will. All right, thank you. All right, with that, thank you, thank you, thank you. And again, folks, we're constantly monitoring and adjusting with COVID. All right, Mr. Shealy, any comments? County comments, county council members?
Thank you all for all your hard work, Mike, today on this airport phone. That's all I got.
Mr. Hitt?
Yeah, at our last meeting, we heard a very heart-wrenching reach out from one of our citizens about conditions at the hospital and the nursing home. I'm not going to put anybody on the spot, but I will say that I've talked with my two representatives on the hospital board and asked them to do what is necessary to make people available to be with their loved ones, family members. It may only be one person once a day, whatever, but they have agreed to work on that. And if you haven't already contacted your representative, your appointees on the hospital board, please do. Because one or two people saying something might make it happen. Eight or 10 people saying it, and it will happen. And if we can put a man on the moon, by God, we can put a family member in a hospital room. So.
It's my understanding they're doing one person from nine to 11 at the hospital. You can have one visitor from nine to 11.
They have also restricted visitation again since there was a spike.
I got you.
They can, you know, there's separate criteria for a COVID patient versus another patient.
Right.
But what we need them to do is focus on making it happen.
Yes, sir. Okay, Mary Erwin?
I want to thank all of the council members for us passing this, what it does for us economically. Puts us kind of in the cat seat, whatever you want to call it, when industry comes around. So for our children and grandchildren, I think we're doing the right thing.
Mr. Johnson?
Just, I just want to thank the staff and particularly Mr. Adams. I've told him in private that I've had a number of calls for constituent service. And even on Saturday nights and Sunday afternoons, he's sending this email saying he's here, and he's been so responsive to that. And even in this last, what we heard, with your ability to have those contacts and know where your resources are and understand how things work. So I tip my hat to you and the great staff here, sir, and I'm most appreciative of what you've done.
They're the best.
All right, Mr. Scurry?
My call's picked up too.
Well, thank all council. Your dedication of working together for all you ever follow, we can go forward. Without that, we can't go forward. We have a good county minister, we got a good attorney. And I worked with all of them for a year, and they are dedicated peoples. We want to do the same for them who dedicate us. Thank you all so much.
Mr. Reed?
Yeah, I would like to ditto on that with the staff and all the council individuals. Because right now, it seems like we all on one mission. And our mission is to make Newbury a better place for its citizens. So we need to keep doing that and keep making more people come into council or listening to us every month on virtual. Get everybody interested. Let everybody have an opinion. Everybody pays taxes, so everybody needs to have an opinion. But I appreciate the fact that we all stick to one mission and we're working together as a team. And I'd like to wish everybody, please stay safe out here. It looks like we got different kinds of COVID-19 things coming through from different places. And we all have to be on the same accord. We have to stay safe. Because you never know from day to day who's the next person. Our sheriff is doing it a little bit better, and I'm glad to hear that. But you never know who's going to be the next person. So please be safe.
Okay, with that being said, I totally agree. And one of the things, I was South Coast Association of Counties. We got some pretty good news there that I'll let Debbie share later on about when I worked with comp stuff. But we had a meeting there, and just listing the sidebar conversations by other councils that's within that and hearing the quarrels and stuff, this bickering that sounds like is going on behind the scenes, I'm just so thankful that we've got what we've got. And again, the team of administrators that we've got, we are blessed in this county. So again, thanks to everyone for all their input and efforts to make Newbury County a better place. With that, we got item number 13, future meetings. County council meeting on February 17th at 6:00 p.m. Personnel and governmental committee meeting at 22nd at 6:00 p.m. Economic development meeting on March 1st at 6:00 p.m. And y'all, I'm having a hard time adjusting to six o'clock stuff. I almost missed this morning, or this afternoon. So anyway, I'm,
It's Friday at?
It's Friday at two o'clock. Yes. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? Much longer than such, members. All right.
You're wrapped. Wow.